출산으로 다 수령화되면서 인과학은 아니고 사회과학은 아니고 사회적 관점에 관심이 저출산에 그냥 하나로 수렴돼버렸어요. 그래서 사실상 우리가 인구하기 지금 전이 대목이거든요. 근데 보니까 그게 그거는 맨 파워가 많이 들어있는 거예요. 그래서 여기 뒷자리에 있는 학생들 오늘 아침부터 와서 계속 경청하고 있고 대학원 들도 여기서 발표하고 있고 대학원 저기 논문은 뭐 시상도 하고 그러면서 우리가 새로운 전통을 만들어서 후세대들이 이 어렵고 재미없고 운한 생기고 취지가 안 되는 이 인구학을 계속하실 수 있도록 저희가 저거를 계속 만들려고 노력하고 있는데요. 하겠습니다. 자 그러면 연속해서 특별 세션으로 선생님들 모시겠습니다. 마이크가 하나밖에 없어. 오경수 교수가 제일 친구죠. 저는 지금 힘들어서 치우지 않고 치우고 나와 있거든요. 힘들어요. 그냥 이거 안 했으면 좋겠는데. 회장님 꼭 가셔야 되겠습니까?
아나한 말이 없어요.
회장님 발동당해서 엄청 반대했어요. 그냥 회장님은 되잖아요. 근데 끝이 밝아지겠대요. 오케이. This is special session. The title is East Asians' population risk and sustainable development future. And there are going to be five presenters who will make the presentation. And there are several discussioners who will respond and make a comment about the presentation. But as you guys know, time is always limited, right? So I ask each of the presenters make a short speech. Because I assume that everybody can read the proceedings. So do your best to save time for the next presenter and discussion. And the first presenter, as you guys know, is Dr. Fang Hyun Lee. He'll talk about gender equality and work-family balance program has been not participated in. He's will talk about the curious uniqueness in the historical and social context of the period. Please.
Okay, thank you. I'm Fang Hyun Lee. I know my toughest shocking subject. I know. But recently, South Korea has shown the most detrimental rate in the world. Korean population theory had usually based on the Western demographic theory, not Korean theory. So I would say why we need Asian social demographic theory? I would say Western social not only solution. Western theory helped us develop this application to Asian society. But not the cost side. So we focus and find the cost end effect. That is the Asian social demographic theory. If the cost outweighs the net. Then the population based on Western theory will do more harm. They would our society and show in the result. But in Korea, inconsistency between Western theory and Asian theory is greater. Then the cost end side effect will be outweighing the balance. Then government population pollution may be more harmful. I think gender equality blocks family balance in that case. So the main cost is there, the loss of being helped is very much. So. Okay, my big argument is that Asian population portion was the Asian the Asian reality, not Western image. Christ of 14. Western reaction was European cultural emotion created by this reduction of Asian role and place. This is time for us to discover the spirit of our oriental answer and develop it all through time. Like West, we need remote oriental lessons. We are oriental population research and population first, which is based on oriental history and one view. So I've got to say, we think that Korea and Japan have similar culture. But Japan is more traditional than Korea. Japan woman want to be proud to be helped is very much. The difference between TFR, point seven eight in Korea and TFR, one point six in Japan is quite is big difference. So I focus on the similarity and difference between Korea and Japan. The change in TFR is rather caused by the changing in the non-mage million rate and metro fat rate. The impact of the marriage rate in TFR is similar to Korea and Japan. So global is true, global TFR is relative increasing non-mage rate. But for example, life on non-mage rate is higher than Korea. So increasing non-mage rate in both countries should contribute the loss of fertility rate. But it does not explain TFR between Japan and Korea. I think the difference based on what is true, the cost or difference between Korea and Japan. So if the difference between marriage, marriage and child is weaker than Korea and in Korea than Japan. For example, previous of Chinese couple whose marriage rate within five years equals from 2016 to 2015 to 2011. We know children decrease from point eight to point sixteen. So gender equality by police has been active to increase Korean rate of fertility since 2006. But it seems there to be a decline. Look at this table. So this is this time from sixteen seventeen is the family program. This is gender equality program. So this is from 2006 and that is nine sixty and seventy. And so for example, I see it. Look at this one. For almost auto. That time, if we were to auto it, then it would down. In this time, gender equality proportion is paid for up. Going up. Also, abortion patriarchy in family planning program that time is paid for down. Recently, gender equality program is paid for up. I would say. No, no. So we must outprovent abortion patriarchy, but it's not for abortion solution, I don't think so. So this relation is right in Korean reality is negative. The failure gender equality work-family balance. This is I expect it. Which one? This is expectation based on only most West European discussion, not Korean discussion. So that's beside. Also studied low factor in Korea, even though the effect of family planning in nineteen sixty was more. Which is related to better. So also related to family culture. So we must push the system of family planning program that is the factor on the gender equality work-family balance program. So population population pollution must face in Korean reality, not Western. So gender equality work-family balance emphasize almost almost character. This is something reject almost identity as being as the Korean mother. Which is which is interesting motivation child born in Korea, made in Korea and Japanese. Korean woman provide the heart care over marriage in China than than Korean woman. But whereas Japan woman, well, Korean family want to work. Or does it want house husband working outside home, wife, wife can't care for him? In Japan, twenty young young girl, how we is the forty-four point? So in Japanese woman, forty-two point four. But in Korea, they can help us young woman to opt. So compared to Korean woman, Japanese woman must like to be of their character coming either. So. So we think of this is compared to working mom and not working mom. Working mom. Red one. More like with the abortion chances is higher compared to. Also, working mom show tomorrow mean of our children than non-working mom. It's it's so wonderful gender equality song. So compared to woman to the one. However, according to gender revolution at first stage of gender revolution, revolution, fat rate decline viewed in the embrace. But at those stage, second stage, fat is rebound or increasing, we are time between family and work. However, I'm really wondering, is the second gender revolution possible in Korea? That is can Korea be beaten? I don't think so. So according to the gender revolution, even though gender revolution is not coming, then Korean fat is in the above. Gender work-family balance has been active since two thousand. Twenty years passed. Is it worth to keep doing it? Yes, then how long to be have to be on the bank? Okay, I speak with Omar. This Omar just cannot. Okay. Okay, time's going. So also equally non-battle force increasing in Korea, I don't think after. By so so yes, sir. Implementation of gender equality work-family balance in South Korea show the cost and size of outbreak of benefits. Though main side and cost is not also identified and probably helped, this is very much. Which is interesting motivation in Chinese box. Gender equality work-family loss is not product culture, but we must improve policy. So South Korea writing family family face was through the shift of in conception is a change of the island of pride in power, who is very much. That comes from having and writing children. Thank you.
Next, please. Professor Masuwa. Professor Masuwa's present topic is the COVID-19 change in population. This is a comparative study among the high income countries in the country of Japan and Japan as well.
I'm Mr. Masuwa from Masuwa University in Japan. My presentation aims to indicate the differences in the effect of COVID-19 on maturity date between countries. This presentation is based on a joint joint study with Professor Tsukasa Matsura from Chihou University in Japan. But he is absent, so I'm making presentation by myself. So over all outlines showing to be integrated into the background of our study in introduction. Figure one, figure one, present the impact of COVID-19 on fertility rate and to the precise the trend of fertility rate. Yes. And by providing the writing the fourteen countries into five regions groups. First, Japan and South Korea. Second is Northern Europe. South is United States and Western Europe. Fourth is Central Europe. Fifth is Northern Europe. Then considering the geographical and cultural activities. Then the effects of the shock on fertility rates tend to manifest approximately nine to ten months after the initial shock. The notable fracture is maturity date has been observed in many countries from November twenty twenty to January twenty twenty one. Interestingly, despite belonging to the same high income category, some countries have experienced a prominent prominent decline. Whereas other have has have experienced experienced a substantial increase in fertility rates. Furthermore, when observing subsequent subsequent trends, some countries appear to compare to large pandemic levels over a certain period. However, a country such as Japan and South Korea exhibit exhibit a continued decline in fertility rates after the COVID-19 period. Some previous studies have examined the correlation between COVID-19 and VAS by forecasting a single country. By using data from various countries, other studies have explained the impact of COVID-19 shock on VAS through socioeconomic factors. Furthermore, some studies have specifically investigated how the impact of COVID-19 on fertility days and subsequent rates vary across countries. In the previous studies, there has been no exploration of causal relationships. Hence, we explore the causal relationship between the impact of COVID-19 and the fertility rate by conducting event study analysis and D I D analysis based on cross-country monthly data. The next I will say about model and data. The first, let's explain the model of event study analysis to examine the effect of COVID-19 on the total fertility rate TFR across different regional groups. A plus I represents the regional groups and T represents a month. The dependent variables Y represents a TFR ten months after the difference point, which was set as February twenty twenty. We introduce the W variable Z to capture the impact of COVID-19 on the TFR in each regional group at various time points. Additionally, we include economic variables X, the employment rate and inflation rate to control for the potential influence on maturity rate. And the individual effects of the regional groups are the note of alpha and gamma represents the time effects. So we employ the fixed effect model. And some U represents the original error component of the model. By employing, sorry, by employing the employing this framework, we can analyze how the TFR after ten months changes before and after the COVID-19 shock concerning both regional and temporary variations. In the D I D analysis, we examine whether the impact of economic variables such as unemployment, unemployment rate and inflation rate, so C P R. On fertility rates, various across different groups, distance shown as close term in the second line of the equation. Additionally, we investigate whether these economic variables have different effects on fertility rates before and after the COVID-19 shock. And this is shown as a cross term in the third line of this equation. In our explanation, we introduce the variable region as a W variable representing representing four different regions. With Japan and South Korea as a reference group, reference group, reference category. The variable after is also included as an indicator variable after February twenty twenty as one to capture the pre and post shock period. Next, I explain data. The data used in our analysis were based on monthly observations. For the TFR in Japan, we obtained the number of VAS by five-year age groups in Japan. And we divided this by the female population data by five-year age groups. And multiplied it by five to account for the five-year age groups. And furthermore, multiplied it by twelve to obtain annual indicators. We then applied next to twelve hour for seasonal adjustment. For the TFR in countries other than Japan, we utilize a seasonal adjusted series from the human fertility database. And it was updated in March, March twenty twenty three. And jointly provided by the Max Planck Institute for Demographic Research in Germany and the Vienna Institute for Demography in Austria. We use data from January twenty twenty eighteen to January twenty twenty three. Unemployment data, unemployment, sorry, unemployment rate data were obtained from a database from O E C D and for seasonal adjustment. However, C P R were sourced from the United donation monthly breeding statistics online database and were not statistically adjusted. But as no clear seasonality was observed, we used the original series in our installation. Regarding regarding the selection criteria of advanced countries other than Japan, we follow the criteria used by Master twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three, which include thirty countries that are related similar to Japan in terms of economic development among advanced Western countries as well as culturally similar countries like South Korea. We employ the least greatest variable data for each of the fourteen nations encompassed in our study. And next I will show the result. Now let's explore the key findings. First, we present the result of event study analysis. And figure two shows the result for Japan and South Korea after the onset of the COVID-19 shock in February twenty twenty. The total country TFR in both countries exhibited a slight decline in average. Subsequently, a mild recovery trend was observed until August. But from that point onwards, the TFR essentially diverted to the declining trajectory of that where prior to the COVID-19 shock, with no man surpassing the TFR level recorded in February twenty twenty. In addition, in Japan and South Korea, the TFR has consistently remained low since the COVID-19 shock. Previously, it relates the results for Southern Europe. A prominent decrease in the TFR was observed in February twenty twenty. Before February twenty twenty, TFR was higher than in these months for most years. Subsequently, there was a gradual recovery in the fertility rate, but until January twenty twenty one, there was small difference compared with February twenty twenty. But from that point onwards, the fertility rate shows an upward trend indicating a recovery surpassing the pre-COVID-19 level. And next figure four shows the result for Northern Europe. Before February twenty twenty, the TFR was lower for several months. But there was a sharp increase in the fertility rate from February to March twenty twenty. Subsequently, there was a declining trend and extremely one year after the COVID-19 shock. The fertility rate became even lower than the pre-COVID-19 level. Here, we commit the results from Central Europe and Western Europe and United States show only characteristics. First, I explain a little bit. And the result for Western Europe and United States shows that why there was a temporary decline following the COVID-19 shock. The fertility rate remained higher than pre-COVID-19 levels for over a year. However, a downward trend was observed after May twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one. Furthermore, the result for Central Europe indicates that there was a temporary increase immediately after the COVID-19 shock. But approximately four months later, the fertility rate returned to a level similar to that before the shock. And no difference was observed thereafter. By comparing the times we changed in the depression in figure one with results of the event study analysis, focusing on the difference differences between vision before and after the COVID-19 shock by controlling for unemployment and inflation rate. Several common points were identified, but the foreign differences should be observed. First, by examining first by examining the regional trends of TFRs in figure one. Northern Europe exhibits a strength of an increase in fertility rate for a few months following the COVID-19 shock, followed by a gradual decline. But according to the event study analysis in figure four, Northern Europe experienced experienced a sharp increase immediately after the shock, followed by a sustained decline resulting in a level lower than that in the pre-COVID-19 period after approximately one year. A second concerning Southern Europe. Figure one shows a sharp decline in fertility rate after the COVID-19 shock, followed by recovery to a level like that before. But the event study analysis But the event study analysis in figure three indicated that one year after the COVID-19 shock, there was a tendency for further increase in fertility rates surpassing the pre-COVID-19 level. For Japan and South Korea, there were no differences between the results in video one and the event study analysis. Japan, South Korea experienced a temporary decline in fertility rates due to the COVID-19 shock, followed by a slight recovery, but a structural decline in fertility rates persisted before and after the shock. Next, DID. And second, we present the DID analysis. Figure one shows the results of the study. Figure one shows the results without controlling the unemployment and inflation rate. A reference is Japan and Korea. And Southern Europe, Western Europe, the United States, and Central Europe show the prominent increase in fertility rates after the COVID-19 shock compared to Japan and South Korea, where little difference was observed in Northern Europe. Figure two presents the results of the controlled unemployment and inflation rate. The impact of unemployment rate on fertility rate is between minus 0.02 and minus 0.002 at 95% confidence interval, plus the impact of the inflation rate between minus 0.007 and 0.003 at 95% confidence interval. An increase in unemployment rate leads to a decrease in fertility rate. Figure three and four include an interaction term between region and unemployment or inflation rate. The interaction term indicates that the effect of unemployment rate on fertility rates does not vary across regions, as shown in figure three. However, figure four shows an increase of 1% in CPI rate to 0.00 point decrease in TFR. And the interaction term between the CPI and region is positive for Southern Europe, Western Europe, the United States, and Central Europe, while it is negative for Northern Europe. Examining the marginal effects, an increase of 1% in the inflation rate leads to an increase of 0.0011 in the TFR for Southern Europe and a decrease of 0.003, 0.002, 0.04, 0.00, 0.01 for the United States, Western Europe, Central Europe, Northern Europe, and Japan and South Korea respectively. This indicates that the effects of inflation rate on fertility rates also vary across regions. Figure five and six shows the interaction terms between the COVID-19 shock and unemployment or inflation rate. And these terms suggest that the effect of unemployment and inflation rate on fertility rate did not change before and after the COVID-19 shock. Finally, here is a conclusion. We demonstrated that the COVID-19 pandemic has had a profound shock to fertility rates worldwide, resulting in varying effects depending on the region, even after accounting for unemployment and inflation rate. COVID-19 shock's negative effect on fertility rates remains weaker in Western Europe and the United States, Southern Europe, and Central Europe than in Japan or South Korea. From a causal perspective, it can be interpreted that the COVID-19 shock had a more impact on fertility rate in Japan and South Korea. Furthermore, it demonstrates the influence of unemployment has a negative impact on TFR irrespective of the pandemic and regions, while the impact of inflation is different across regions. While COVID-19 substantially affected fertility rates, the nature of this impact occurred across regions implying that pretends of non-economic factors. Thank you.
Masda, for those who think English is not really convenient, I'm going to speak a little bit in Korean. I'm going to explain what Mr. Yoo's study did. He studied the economy of the 16 countries. He compared the COVID-19 outbreak and the vaccination rate. Among them, he analyzed the food consumption and then the research. He calculated it. He said, "The countries have been compared, North, Middle, South, and China." This is one of the vaccination methods. It's a type of testing that is used in the webshop. He said, "I'm going to do a comparison." I don't know if you've heard of it. The next presenter is Professor Sasano Misai. And interestingly, she is a presenter in Korea.
Yes.
And you speak in Korean?
Yes.
Wow. We have some problems when we make the presenting paper because there's no English title here. It would be very wonderful. Thank you so much for your comment.
My name is Misai Sasano. I am an assistant professor of investment in Japan. And today, I applied my presentation in Korea, but another presentation was all English. So, I asked for presenter. I have to prepare the English version, but they said you don't need it. You should presentate in Korean. So, I'm sorry, I will presentate in Korean today.
I'm going to talk about the relationship between the children of the Japanese and Chinese. First, I'm a woman who lived in Japan for 15 years. I'm not going to say that. I was born in Seoul in 2016. I was studying the difference in gender and nationality and the relationship between family and family. At that time, the children of the Japanese and Chinese in the Japanese were completely different in relationship. It was very interesting. This time, I want to introduce the relationship between the older generation and the younger generation.
그 나라들은 영국, 미국, 스웨덴, 독일, 프랑스, 일본, 한국입니다. 그리고 영국의 상자는 어 2018년 그 당시에 13세부터 29세의 천년들이라서 주로 89년부터 2005년생 우리가 말하는 90년대생들이 온다. 그들의 가족 가치입니다. 그래서 오늘은 그 가족 가치도 분석했는데 그 조금 더 들어가서 가족 가치의 영향 미치는 불평등 인식, 불안감, 자금식 이런 것도 좀 비교해보고자 합니다. 그래서 가족 저출산 둘러사고 그 많은 연구들이 있지만 주로 세 가지 출명에 포커스하고 연구하고 있습니다. 그 주로 제도적으로 어떤 차이가 있는지 제도를 비교하는 연구들이 있고 그리고 그 가족 가치는 가치 출명에 포커스하고 연구하는 연구들이 있고 그리고 사회의 우중단요가 노동시장에서 어떤 위치에 있는지 불평등에 포커스한 연구들이 주로 세 가지로 나눌 수 있을 것 같은데 다 연결되어 있어서 다 같이 봐야 되는데 그 지금 20분 발표에는 그런 거 불가능하니까 오늘은 가치의 그 초점을 맞춰서 보고자 합니다. 영국 결과 첫 번째 가족 가치에 대해서 말씀드리고자 합니다. 이거는 소형가의 제도에 대해서 이야기하고 있습니다. 남자가 너무 부르고 여자가 가족 지켜야 한다. 또 정형적인 그 소형가를 논의해서 물어보고 있는데 이거는 옆으로 연령입니다. 열세 살부터 29세. 이거는 파색 대지입니다. 그래서 찬성하는 사람들은 파란색, 반대하는 사람들은 빨간색입니다. 이거 그래서 아까 그 자료를 보면 그 복지 국가 유형론에 나타나는 네 가지 그 나라들을 골라서 조사한 것 같아요. 제가 볼 때. 한국, 일본은 가족 가치주의 국가고 미국과 영국은 자유주의 국가라고 크게 말해지며 또 미국과 프랑스는 보수주의, 스웨덴은 삼인주의 이런 식으로 나눠서 봤을 때 이거는 제도적인 배경이 어떻게 가족 가치의 가치관에 영향 미치는 건가 어느 정도 연관이 있는 것 같지는 않잖아요. 왜냐면은 그 유형에서 하는 국가들이 되게 비슷하게 대답하고 있고 이외로 그 우리가 서부 국가가 조금 더 리베라라고 동아시안은 보수적이라고 믿고 왔는데 젊은 중에서는 좀 반대로 나타났습니다. 특히 한국 그 여성으로 좀 보시면 여기 질문에 찬성하는 사람이 어느 7계급 국가 중에서 가장 반대 의견이 강한 걸로 나타났고 일본도 좀 유사하게 나타나는 걸 확인할 수 있습니다. 그 다음에 이것도 소형가를 논의해 대해서 물어보고 있는데 자녀가 어릴 때는 어머니의 잔여를 돌봐야 한다. 이거에 대한 참바 의견을 보면 이것도 7계급 그 유형마다 비슷한 대답이 나옵니다. 그리고 여기서도 이외로 유럽 국가들이 아시아보다 훨씬 보수적인 가치 제도를 보이고 있습니다. 여기서도 한국과 일본이 비슷하게 나타나는데 마찬가지로 한국 여성들이 가장 반대 의견이 강한 것을 확인할 수 있습니다. 그리고 결혼 가치를 살펴보면 여기 이거는 결혼을 해야 한다. 파란색. 하는 것이 좋다. 노란색. 어안 해도 된다. 그리고 보라색이 되게 가해요. 하면 안 된다. 이렇게 물어보고 그러니까 내가 골을 수 있는데 여기서도 그 뭐라고 할까요? 안 해도 된다. 그러니까 다른 나라에서도 많지만 미국과 영국을 보면 해야 한다도 되게 많고 미국과 영국도 되게 보수적인 걸로 나타났고 한국 여성들이 여기서도 보라색 가장 많은 거 여기밖에 없어요. 하면 안 된다. 되게 강하게 반대하는 가족 가치를 좀 거부하는 모습이 좀볼수 있습니다. 그래도 이것도 뭐 마찬가지고 유형별로 좀 비슷하게 나타납니다. 그래서 조금 더 가족 가치보다 다른 출명, 그 불평등 인식, 불안감, 자금식 이런 것도 살펴보고자 분석했는데 이거는 여기서 질문이 현재 본인 이미지에 대한 다섯 가지 질문이 있고 오른쪽에는 미래 본인 이미지에 대한 열한 가지의 질문이 있습니다. 이거를 에그내 단계로 그렇다부터 아 그렇지 않다부터 그렇다까지 그 체크할 수 있는데 그렇다가 넘으면 점수가 높을수록 자기에 대해서 근접적인 이미지를 갖고 있는 거고 점수가 가질수록 그 무전적인 이미지를 가지고 있는 것입니다. 그래서 이거 그냥 평균 값으로 비교했을 때 가장 점수가 다른 나라보다 되게 낮게 나타나는 거는 여기서 일본이고 확인할 수 있을 것 같습니다. 일본 천년들이 다른 나라 천년에 비해서 현재 본인에 대한 그 근접적인 이미지도 되게 낮고 미래에 대한 자기의 그 이미지도 되게 낮습니다. 이거 어떤 거 물어보고 있냐면 뭐해 미래에 부자가 되고 있다. 자유롭게 살고 있다. 이런 거에 대해서 되게 미래에 대한 바른 생각이 없는 거죠. 그리고 본인 지금의 이미지에 대해서도 본인에 대해 만족한다. 나는 뭐 장점 있다. 이런 것도 다른 나라에 비해서 되게 낮은 걸로 나타났습니다. 그래서 그 이거 두 번째 미래에 대한 열한 가지의 질문에 대해서 되게 점수가 낮으니까 그 유형별로 좀 살펴보고자 그 장차 집단 분석을 해봤습니다. 그 같은 여기 열한 가지의 질문에 대해서 그 비슷한 대답하는 사람들이 눈끈 겁니다. 근데 이거는 다 영향 영환되어 있어서 파란색 그 클라스와는 모든 질문에 대해서 점수가 낮은 집단이에요. 그러면은 뭐 투자가 되고 있다고 생각하지 않은 사람들은 다른 질문에 대해서도 다 무전적이에요. 나는 해에 대해 살고 있지도 않고 즐세도 하지 않고 결혼도 하지 않고 막다 모든 영환하고 있어요. 되게 무전적인 그룹이고 그 노란색은 가장 근접적인 그룹이에요. 모든 거에 나는 부자가 되고 있고 자유롭게 살고 있고 이런 사람들입니다. 어 그래서 아 굳이 이거 그룹으로 나눌 필요가 없나 했더니 여기 그룹 틀을 보면 되게 특이한 유형이 하나 나타났습니다. 이 사람들은 모든 질문에 대해서 두 번째로 무전적이에요. 그러면서 근접적인 출명이 있어요. 어디냐 하니 했을 때 여기 육칠팔을 보면은 자녀를 키우고 있다. 부모를 소중히 한다. 행복하고 있다. 결혼한다. 이런 가족 형성에 대한 모든 거에 대한 그 밝은 미래는 없지만 가족 형성에 대해서는 나는 좀 근접적인 생각이 있다. 그거에 그 미래 희망을 갖고 있는 집단이 있었습니다. 그러면 이 집단에 속하는 사람들이 나라별로 어느 정도 있는지 성별로 살펴봤을 때 이렇게 나타났습니다. 근데 이게 재밌는 게 역시 일본은 모든 거에 무전적이 그룹 안에 속하는 사람이 제일 많죠. 그러면서 일본 젊은 여성 사이에서 두 번째 모든 거에 밝은 미래는 없지만 가족 형성에는 나는 희망을 찾을 수 있다. 이런 집단이 어느 나라보다 높아요. 그리고 반대로 한국은 어느 나라보다 그렇게 생각하는 여성들이 없다는 거를 확인할 수 있습니다. 되게 다르다는 거를 확인할 수 있는 거죠. 그래서 조금 더 나아가 분석하기 전에 일본 젊은 사이에서 이렇게 보수적인 가족 가치를 가지는 출명을 좀또이 부분은 2000년대생 가족 가치를 조사한 건데 그것도 좀 살펴봤을 때 비슷하게 나타나요. 그 다시 인쇄해서 가장 소중한 거는 무엇이니까 물어보면 남자보다 여성 사이에서 그린 색깔이 여성이고 파란색이 남성인데 남자보다 여성이 훨씬 가족을 희망하고 있고 여기서도 어 결혼할 것아 자신이 결혼할 것이라고 생각하는 이유를 골라주세요. 이렇게 했을 때도 남자보다 여자들이 자기 자기 자신의 가족을 가지고 싶기 때문에 아이를 키우고 싶기 때문에 이런 식으로 아이를 키우는 거에 대해서도 남자보다 여성이 훨씬 근접적인 인물을 확인할 수 있습니다. 그래서 이 자료를 이용해서 조금 더 다른 출명도 분석해봤습니다. 그러면 희망 자녀수에 대해서도 물어보고 있습니다. 이거 보면 완전히 차이가 나타납니다. 일본 여성들은 가장 왼쪽인데 위쪽이 여성이고 밑에가 남성이에요. 근데 그 모든 나라에서 두 자녀를 제일 많이 희망하고 있어요. 두 명의 자녀를 가지고 싶다. 그런데 일본 여성들은 그 그린 색깔 세 명의 자녀를 가지고 싶다라고 대답하는 사람들은 다른 나라보다 넘게 일 점수저리 있고 오히려 남자가 아 애가 필요 없다. 핑크 색깔 애가 필요 없다예요. 그리고 여자보다 남자가 좀 자녀 형성에 대해서 무전적인 효고성이 있는 걸 확인할 수 있고 한국은 내조적으로 어느 나라보다 핑크 색깔이 높은 걸 보이시죠? 이거 애가 필요 없다고 대답하는 젊은들이 어느 나라보다 많다는 거죠. 결혼도 하고 싶지 않고 애도 키우고 싶지 않는 사람들이 되게 많은 걸로 나타났습니다. 그리고 인쇄해서 뭐가 중요하지 물어보는 질문이 있는데 이거는 세 가지 골을 수 있어요. 일이인지 가정인지 나의 나 자신인지. 이거를 봤을 때도 큰 차이가 나타났습니다. 일본 여성들은 파 파란색 가족 가족이 가장 중요하다라고 대답하고 있고요. 어 이거 너길 프랑스도 되게 보수적이고 비슷하게 가족이 중요하다고 대답하고 있어요. 근데 그거에 비해서 한국은 가족이 중요하다고 대답하는 여성들이 다른 나라보다 없고 거의 없어요. 그리고 가족이 빠진 대답이 있어요. 이거는 일과 나 가족이 빠지고 핑크 색깔인데 되게 높게 나타납니다. 그래서 가족 형성에 대해 되게 무전적인 생각 가지는 90년대생들이 되게 많은 걸로 확인되었고 남녀 차이가 심하고 같아서 이것도 좀 남녀 차이를 봤는데 아이 결혼하고 가족 끌이고 싶다라는 질문에 대한 평균 값을 봤을 때도 이거 오른쪽이 남녀 차이를 봤는데 한국은 남자들은 그렇게 무전적이지 않아요. 다른 나라가 비슷하게 좀 근접적인 생각 가지는데 여성들이 이렇게 남녀 차이가 나타나는 나라들이 또 없어요. 한국은 남녀 갈등이 심하고 이런데서도 되게 확인할 수 있는 것 같습니다. 여성 여자가 남자 사이에서 생각이 꽤 다릅니다. 그리고 불평등 인식도 좀 살펴봤는데 이거 사회에서 성공하는 요인을 하나 골라주세요. 이런 질문인데요. 일본은 어 너길 프랑스도 마찬가지지만 이거 핑크 색깔은 노력이에요. 노력하면서 성공할 수 있다. 노력 심화가 있는 건데 그 다음에 일본 천년들이 대답하는 거는 노력, 그 다음에 능력, 그리고 마지막에 을이 색깔 이렇게 높아요. 을. 이렇게 대답하고 이거 노란색은 부모예요. 부모 배경. 부모 배경 고르는 사람이 거의 없어요. 이것도 되게 일본의 특징이라고 생각했습니다. 왜냐면은 일본도 부모 배경이 되게 큰데 그렇게 생각 안 하고 있는 거에 비해서 한국 천년들은 이거 다 부모 배경이에요. 어느 나라보다도 강하게 부모의 배경이 있어야 사회에서 성공할 수 있다는 생각하고 있습니다. 이거 되게 그그 테라독스라고 생각합니다. 왜냐면은 가족 형성을 거부하면서도 자기가 성공하려면 가족이 중요하다는 거라는 것이 이 자료에서 나타났습니다. 그리고 이것도 사회의 문제에 대한 인식을 좀 살펴봤는데 이거는 사실 나라에 어떤 사회 문제가 있습니까라고 물어보고 있는데 이것도 있다고 생각하는 거 모든 체크할 수 있어요. 근데 이것도 여기서 부모의 그 배경이 중요하다. 우리 사회에서는 부모의 배경 차이가 되게 크다. 그 생각하는 사람들이 이거 밑에 아 위에서 두세 번째인데 되게 높게 나타나잖아요. 근데 일본은 되게 깨닫잖아요. 이거 화살표가 있는데 그렇게 능력이 잠시 없다고 있는 그런 큰 차이가 나타났고 전체적으로 일본 천년들은 자기 사회에 있는 사회 문제에 대한 인식 능력이 낮은 것 같아요. 문제가 없다는 식으로 생각하고 있고 한국은 되게 강하게 민감하게 문제가 있다라고 생각하고 있는 모습이 확인되었습니다. 되게 큰 차이가 있다면 보고 어 이거 주치관이 없어도 이거 무전적인 차이 왜 이렇게 차이가 나타나는지를 상당히 말씀드리면 제가 봤을 때 일단 한국 젊은 여성들은 압축적으로 고강력자가 되었습니다. 이거 오른쪽 보시면 밑에는 엄마 세대고 위에는 딸 세대예요. 그러니까 교육 수준 차이를 봤을 때 엄마 세대는 지금 55세부터 64세 부모 세대는 20%도 대학 못 갔습니다. 근데 지금 딸 세대 보세요. OICD 국가 중에서 가장 많이 거의 80% 여성들이 대학 가고 완전 다른 나라에서는 3세대에 걸쳐서 변화는 변화를 불가한 세대가 그렇게 변해버려서 가치관 출명이 큰 거라고 생각합니다. 그리고 일본과 한국 여성들이 노동시장에서 매직되는 그 배경을 봤을 때 흔히 여성 지역률을 비교하면 한국보다 일본이 높아서 어 한국 여성들이 아직 뭐 가구 잘 보고 이런 이야기 나오니까 근데 제가 지역률로 이야기하면 안 된다고 생각하는 게 어떤 일을 하고 있는지가 더 중요하다고 생각해요. 그러면은 정규직으로 일하는 사람이 없는 적이 있느냐? 그럼 이야기가 달라져요. 한국이 훨씬 정규직으로 일하고 있고 일본 여성의 지역률은 다 비정규직이에요. 파스타입이나 비정규직으로 일한다는 거고 이게 남녀 차이를 비교했을 때도 어 한국은 남녀 남녀 모두 좀 불안정한 노동시장에 있다고 생각하며 일본 남자들은 남자 가장 옆발로 직어 노동시장에서 안전적으로 일하고 있고 여자들이 어 비정규직으로 일하면서 가족을 지키는 아직도 2022년차로 이렇게 젠달 차이가 크게 나타나는 거를 보면 일본 여자들은 지금 사회 제도에 못 승하는 걸로 이거 불평등을 그냥 대응하는 것 같습니다. 그리고 마지막에 그 정규직으로 일하는 사람 제가 시계열을 봤을 때 한국은 상황이 좋아지고 있는 게 확인됩니다. 조금씩 조금씩 정규직으로 일하는 사람들이 늘어 10%정도 늘어났는데 과거 20년 사이에 일본은 그런 거 확인할 수 없고 계속 어느 연령이 되면은 정규직에서 빠지고 노동시장에서 이탈합니다. 그래서 결론은 그 처음에 보여드렸던 7계급 그 복지 국가 유형별로 살펴봤을 때 되게 비슷하게 한국과 일본 천년들이 가치가 가지고 있네 그런 거 나타나지만 조금 더 들어가 보면 되게 두 나라에서 큰 차이가 있는 에 뭐지 확인할 수 있고 그 차이를 주도하는 주체는 여성들입니다. 그래서 저는 마지막에 일본과 한국 그 젊은 사람들의 마음을 좀 그려봤는데 일본 여자들이 불안합니다. 미래에 대한 그 밝은 희망도 없고 불안한 성에서 살수 있는데 기존 사회 제도에 순응하고 살 수밖에 없는 그런 모습이 나타납니다. 그리고 한국은 불안 불만이 있습니다. 운동하고 있습니다. 기존 사회 제도를 거부하고 있고 가족 형성 거부하고 젠달 불편에 대해서 목소리 내고 이런 모습이 확인됩니다. 그래서 저는 그 옛날에 박사 과정 때 읽었던 책 중에서 회슈반에서 일원에서 뭔가 그 컨슈마들이 불만이 있을 때한 했던 중에 엑시트 보이스 로얄티가 있는 근처에 한국 여성들이 보이스 목소리를 내고 있다면 일본 여성들은 이탈은 할수 없어요. 이미 갈수 없으니까 로얄티 그냥 그 제도에 맞게 받아들이고 살다 좀 편하니까 그렇게 해서 다시 보수적인 가족 제도 안에서 어 따라가고 사는 거 쓸어 생각할 수 있을 것 같습니다. 그래서 저출산 배경이 많이 다르다는 이야기를 하고 싶었습니다. 감사합니다.
So, good afternoon. My name is Nozomi Inoue from Japan. So, today we would like to give a presentation on the impact of changes in family energy consumption in Japan. As you know, carbon neutrality is the goal that should be achieved by 2050. But, however, this study shows that declining pathway and aging population are obstacles to this goal of achievement. So, we prepared six contents today, but I guess I don't have enough time to explain all contents unfortunately. So, because I won't just spend time to explain the result of the projection, so I have to skip some to make sense. So, what is there of our research? I mean motivation of our research? So, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, any developed country will enter or already entered an aging society like Korea or like Japan in the near future and household energy consumption will be affected by population aging. So, the purpose of this research is to assess the impact of population aging or energy consumption among Japanese households. So, combining household energy consumption microdata with population projection data, we project how energy consumption will change by region and household type from 2020 to 2040. So, to conduct the future projection, we use three data altogether from two surveys and one projection. So, first one is the average number of persons in households by household type from Japan census data. Second one is projection of household number from household projection for Japan 2015 to 2040. The last one is household CO2 emission from household CO2 survey 2014, 2015 to 2018 by the three of the Empire and Japan. So, let's talk about this data in detail. Um, I guess everyone knows census data, so I'd like to skip this slide. I just put the table. This table shows the average number of persons in household by household type in Japan. If you have any concerns, please see later. So, um, projecting of household number. The projection is based on census data by SPG, regional population projection for Japan by NIPS, and population projection for Japan, which estimate the number of household by family type by preference every five years from 2020 to 2040. While households are classified into 2020 group types in the Japan census, however, the household direction classified household is only five types only. Like single person household, couple only household, parent and child household, single parent household, and other household. So, why not use using this five classification in this research? So, that's where it tells of CO2 emission. This survey asks household about monthly consumption and spending of various energy sources, including electricity, city gas, electric, gasoline, and gasoline. This study limits their attention to the annual energy consumption used inside home. Specifically, we compress the consumption of electricity, city gas, electric, and gasoline into joules and define the sum of those parties as their total number consumption. So, we project the future energy consumption using these three data and let's be explain methodology. So, this study divided Japan into eleven regions according to the classification by JNA. JNA means Japan Meteorological Agency. In Japanese, we say Kishocho. So, this study, this figure shows the perfection including each region. Like Tokyo, Kinki, and Tokai regions include metropolitan area with high population density. On the other hand, Hokkaido, Tohoku, Kanto, and Hokkaido region has low temperature than the other regions due to their higher latitude. Therefore, we expect that these regions have different energy consumption patterns than the other regions. Household classification, as we explained earlier, we classify the household into six groups, five plus one groups. And first one is single person household, second one is single person household, third one is couple only household, fourth parent and child household, five single parent households, and last one is other households. Using this data from the household CO2 survey, we find the distribution of household's energy consumption for each group in each region. So, we divide the annual energy consumption into N classes, which know the median value of the C class energy consumption by Ebar. We further define the probability that the energy consumption of K-type household in region R falls within the C plus high K L T. We estimate this probability from the household CO2 survey data. So, if the number of K-type household in region R in the ERT is NKRT, then the amount of household consumption ERT in region R can be approximated by the following formula, first one. And however, the energy consumption at natural level can be calculated by surveying over the regions like this. So, next part is about result of projection. What is a finding from this analysis? So, first, let's discuss the result of the projection as a whole Japan. Please look at figure two. This figure shows the time slave changes in annual total energy consumption. It needs to be PG. PG means Petajou. Japan's household energy consumption was 1627 Petajou in 2020. Here, I'm sorry, I have this sound. And will decrease to 1469 Petajou in 2040 here. And this represent are decreased by 10%, which strongly reflects the impact of declining population in Japan. However, the Japanese population is projected to decrease by 14% between 2020 to 2040. So, energy consumption will not decrease as much as population decline. I don't know why, but one reason for this result is that number of single person household will increase in the future. Single person household are not able to share the electric, you know, electric appliance like a washer or a refrigerator or whatever, because they are, they have no family, only single. So, so let's look at the result of the projection by household type, next. Okay. So, table two shows the time slave changes in annual total energy consumption by household type from 2020 to 2040. This table represents two important findings. First, the energy consumption of single household. Oh, sorry, here. Um, sorry. Energy consumption of a single household, single person household is expected to decrease year by year. However, the energy consumption of a single elderly person household is expected to increase like here, 154. This is because the number of a single elderly household will increase in next several decades due to population aging in Japan. So what I'm, I'm trying to say is that it is clear that the population aging will increase household energy consumption so much. Second, the energy consumption of couple only household and single parent household is expected to remain about the same level. In contrast, the energy consumption of parents and child household is expected to decrease significantly. This is a strong reflection of the declining pathway like Korea. Japan is facing a decrease in the number of people having children. As a result, um, energy consumption is also expected to decrease. This is really ironic, you know, because one of the environment issue, energy consumption issue tended to improve due to the decrease in pathway rate. It's so ironic. So next part, uh, table three shows the time slice changes in total number, total energy consumption by region from 2020 to 2040. The region including metropolitan area like Tokyo and Tokai, Kinki area does not decrease energy consumption much like here. Uh, 464 to 445. Yes, however, this table projects that the energy consumption will decrease significantly in Hokkaido, Tohoku and Shikoku area. In contrast, the table shows that the energy consumption will increase in Okinawa region, here. And where the average number of household members enlarge and the transition to a single person household is expected to overlap than in other regions. I'm there, explain, uh, simulation. Can I explain simulation or? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so next part, um, we give a simulation. Take a look at figure three. Figure three represents the time slice conversion between baseline and simulation projection. This is national levels, yeah, data. In this section, we will assess the impact of population aging on household energy consumption. Specifically, we will estimate energy consumption if the total number of household will decrease in line in the future. With the population projection, but the composition of household will remain the same as their base year. Base year means 2020. So figures three show the time slice conversion between the simulated consumption with the baseline consumption. According to the baseline projection, as I explained, the national consumption will decrease from 1624 in 2020 year, which is about, uh, in 2023, to 1469 pita jil in 2040 here, maybe here. Which is about, which is about 10% reduction. On the other hand, under the, under the present, presented simulations in our paper, the national consumption will decrease from 1627 pita jil in 2020 to 1523 pita jil in 2040 here, maybe, yeah. Which is about 7% reduction. Therefore, the energy consumption reduction under the presenting simulation scenario is smaller than the one under base scenario by 3%. This, this difference is observed because the share of the household consuming a large amount of energy is higher in 2020 compared with the one in the subsequent years. According to our calculation, the national energy consumption will decrease by 7% from 2020 to 2040 due to the population decrease, while it will decrease by 3% due to population consumption change. So conclusion quickly. So this term is a result of our projection result. So this study assesses the impact of population aging on energy consumption among Japanese households. According to the projection, if the total, total population and demographic composition change as projected, it is expected that national energy consumption in the household sector will decrease by about 10% from 2020 to 2040 even without any energy efficiency improvement. As the population aging, the proportional elderly, single person household will increase. The population aging will increase household energy consumption so much. On the other hand, uh, parents and children are the most energy consuming household. But however, the number of parents and children and their energy consumption will decrease in the future because fewer families will have children. Thank you for your attention. Thank you very much.
The last part of this, Dr. Dong Tanahana, his presentation is pretty much what he has done in his lifetime, uh, longevity of modern society in Japan. And he tried to expect his studies with, yeah, with the, the civic, civic data based on, can say so. And, uh, Dr. Hanaga, thank you. You've been having a great meeting today. This is last of your.
Thank you, thank you, John. How many needs, right? Okay, thank you, okay. Uh, the title of my presentation is the, at first, uh, my table's title is estimated limit of longevity. Uh, fortunately, uh, this paper has been published from, uh, gender psychology. But, uh, when the referee weighed it out, uh, the title is not appropriate because longevity is an individual word. So, uh, if you, uh, if you discuss a population, we use, uh, I should use average lifespan or life expectancy, the correct word. But I'd like to discuss the link of the lifetime of our humanity. So, uh, I use the upper limit of lifetime probability distribution of it. This is difficult work, okay? Uh, let's get started with background. In the field of biology, uh, aging theory is divided into two major groups. Uh, one is called the damage series group. Uh, the other one is a problem theory group. Uh, according to the damage series, uh, we age because our system break down over time. So, uh, this hand, uh, according to the problem theories, we age because there is an inbuilt system, uh, that's help us to die. So if the damage theory are true, in the meaning that the lifetime probability are not zero, uh, longevity record will be eventually destroyed infinitely. Thus, we can survive any longer by avoiding damage on organism. On the other hand, if problem theory are true, we cannot prevent from aging within effort beyond a certain limit. So, uh, my question is, is there any upper limit in the human life probability distribution? So, I am in this study, uh, to examine there is the upper limit of human life probability distribution based on statistical analysis of data for centenarians in Japan. And if so, uh, I'd like to estimate that that upper limit. So, uh, we have to get some data for my study, uh, for, uh, the number of survivors of centenarians. But in the report of National Census, the numbers of survivors are indicated in the table. However, uh, the total of, the data aggregated for 100 years older. So the data obtained from reported National Census is not available. So, uh, but, uh, the Ministry of Health, Labor and Work in Japan wants publishing a book which contains name, name, and address of Asian people who are 100 years older on the holiday of respectful senior citizens' day every year. However, uh, the ministry has stopped the publishing of the National Census because, because, uh, it's protect privacy individuals. In addition, uh, a very big scandal has been revealed. More than 230,000 Japanese centenarian were missing, although they are listed as survivors and their family were evicted in their pension on behalf of them. So, uh, the confidence of data, uh, has been vanished. So, uh, I was at a loss. What can do? But I found that the report, a vital service in Japan is published every year and it includes a number of death by age of 10 years, number of deaths by age of 10 years. So, uh, in addition, I found a very useful method. Uh, it's called extinct core method. The method by extinct core can be used to obtain number of survivors for COVID with no surviving members at the end of the observation period. With this method, uh, you can calculate the number of survivors by summing up all the future deaths for the COVID. Uh, this is a little story in extinct core vessel. If, uh, though, if those COVID has been, is extinct, uh, we can calculate the survivors, number of survivors by summing up all deaths after that. So, uh, this is one of the data, uh, you can see. Uh, I, uh, this data are indicating, uh, 1847, uh, the number of 116 and, uh, the, the, the zero. Uh, but, uh, you can see, there is no large difference between, compared to 1847 to 1844. Okay, let me skip. Uh, very, I applied the, my data, uh, generalized parallel distribution, but very, this discussed in the extreme value theory, but very difficult, very skip, you know, very skip, very skip. Okay? So, okay. So, uh, this is, this indicates my conclusion. Uh, this, uh, figure indicates, uh, estimated limit of longevity, limit of, uh, high type probability distribution. Uh, as you can see, uh, the limit is comparing to 133 years. So my conclusion is, uh, support problem theory and our limit of longevity is 133. This is my conclusion. So our conclusion is that the human life probability function has limit 133 years. So, uh, can I think our effort to live long might be wasteful? Uh, I said no, we have longer residual life after 133. So actually, the mean residual life of 100 is status of kidney, steadily, uh, increasing. So discussing labor force participation rate for elderly people is meaningful. So, uh, I try to analyze, uh, labor force participation rate for 860 and over. Uh, this is, uh, illustrate, uh, illustrate my idea of the order, but let me skip, okay? Uh, this figure indicates, uh, estimated age effect, age effect, uh, eh, 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 this result suggests that, uh, old people would become active uh, after their retirement. Uh, this, this indicates 16 and 164, uh, labor force participation, age effect is increasing after 16. This figure indicates, uh, estimated environment effect, environment effect, socioeconomic effect of, of, of all. So, uh, we can see, uh, we can see the Japan's barbary company gave negative effect on the labor force participation rate, give over 16. Uh, maybe it's because we shouldn't work if it got much money after our retire. But unfortunately, uh, in Japan, economic condition is very poor. So the better economic condition might give a positive effect on the labor force participation rate for all citizens. Uh, this is my conclusion. For some, too short, okay? Good, good, good. Thank you, thank you very much.
The remaining seventeen minutes, we'll finish the whole discussion and the comment. And two professors, distinguished professor, uh, Blue J Y, Prof. University, and Yorin, uh, will come over here. This week really be great because, uh, I think it's actually what have we expected. The twelve hour, uh, this thing is the power from the process. They could not make it. One accident and the worker, uh, committed, uh, I mean, this is correct. I'm losing my reputation. So, uh, we're losing two, uh, discussions as of today. So the remaining two person plus I will, uh, with the discussion about the presentation. Uh, first comes, first afternoon, you about this.
Okay, uh, thank you again. Uh, I think, uh, this session has, uh, five speakers and they have a variety, uh, topic regarding aging and low fertility. Based on the arrangement of organizers. So, uh, my, uh, discussion, uh, will go with Professor Li, Li Song Yong. I will, uh, not from some other four, uh, speakers. I will not focus on the other four speakers. Earlier, I saw Professor Li was not here, but he came back. Okay, I think Professor Li's topic are really interesting and also informative. I learned a lot. And my, the demography, talking about low fertility. The mainly for some, the major reasons why the fertility is lower. But Professor Li take by using the gender perspective to study low fertility. I know he is a gentleman, but using the gender approach. I really speak highly of you about these studies. And second, also, I think the good thing I learned from your talk is you are debating on the Western series. You think the Western series did not fit the Asian, particularly for the Korea. When you use gender equality work, family, such things. So there should be also for Chinese study. They are also discuss the reality of Chinese low fertility and also why the series, series talking about the low fertility. So that's the second thing. Third thing, Li make a comparison about the phenomena. People, I say, he use a non-American, un-American. But I think for Chinese, we use network marriage rate. I don't know whether the indicator are similar. But you study, make a comparison between Japan and Korea. It's really surprising to me at least. Because the network marriage rate is somehow higher between Japan and Korea, much higher than China. And say, for example, like Japan, the network marriage rate for male is 25%. On the second side, female is 16.4. It's really higher. Later, I will talk about the Chinese data. And the fourth also professionally call for the tribute of perception of childbearing. And I think he is a considerer about career solutions to the low fertility from gender perspective. So that's the first thing I think I learned from Professor Li's talk. Second, I will talk about the Chinese cases relevant to your studies. The first, I would say, network marriage rate in China is relatively lower. If you look at the census 2010 and 2020s. The indicator I use here, we study those aged 50s. And after 50, we would look at, because if you say network marriage, for example, 35, they may marry 36. So we use the indicator, the proportions of age 50s. The network marriage we put into the calculations. So China for male, to new data, network marriage rate for male is 3.9 percentage. I think lower, relatively lower than Japan and Korea. And female is even lower, is lower than 1%. It's only 0.96 percentage based on the latest studies. I mean, those male or female population aged 50s. So that's one factors I share with Japanese public and Korean public. The second thing, I think in China, although network marriage rate is lower, cohabitation rate is higher among the younger peoples. For example, like 2020s, cohabitation rate for male is 30%. Before marriage, it's cohabiting. And some may have children, but did not register for marriage. And then for female is 26 percentage. However, our census did not ask the cohabitations. We just asked the marriage. And single marriage divorced, we look at network. Because that's really privacy. And this is based on the surveys. And that's the second. The third, Chinese cases for the low fertility is also unique. I did not know the Japanese data or Korea data. Chinese abortions are higher, abortion rates are higher for last few decades. Even now, for the childbearing woman, abortion rate is 6%. For example, last year, we had 30 million abortion number. But our birth rate is less than 10 million. So that's a really issue. It's not good for female reproductive health. It's a baby issues. So how to avoid abortions will be a big challenge for Chinese government. So that's the Chinese experience by service participants. However, I have made three questions to Professor Li. Is that okay? It's okay, huh? Not okay?
Pull up, finish it.
I finished, but I just asked one question to Professor Li. One question, because you think the policy is denied work gender equality work and family. I know your government encourage women to work. But I wonder whether your government encourage your husband to work on domestic. That's another issue. I will stop.
Okay, I'll just make it short. My name is Yoli. I'll just briefly talk about the research number three and research number four. Yeah, so first, I was impressed by all the research papers over here. But the one by Professor Sasa Misaya, of course, it was in Korean, so it was really easy to understand. But from my understanding, it was, I was like really curious about this research topic and how you brought up this issue and how you like analyzed the data. But for social science and like a study about population and understanding the society, you need like to understand the context of the society. So you have to be insider at some point and you have to be an outsider at some point. And I could see you like you have a fluent like Korean and you have a long history of studying in Korea. So I could see like how you like really was trying to dig into this issue within the Korean society. And sometimes when I was like listening to your like the presentation, I was kind of going like a little bit shocked about what people, what Korean people are thinking. But it is more difficult because I'm also Korean. And it is really difficult for me to become an outsider of our society and to try to like observe the social change, what is coming. But your research kind of really gave us a new perspective at that point. So I was really kind of impressed with that study. So thank you for that presentation. And I think it is also really good because you talked about this like social change. But beyond the numbers, you kind of dig into the social values of people, what they think. So it's kind of like a more like a psychological perspective of a people's understanding. So I think that was also an interesting point of your whole study. So thank you very much. And for number, research number four by Dr. Rosovo in Norway. So I thought this research was also interesting because kind of approaching the kind of issue about population and aging from this like the energy consumption was the kind of a fresh like a perspective for myself. So how you had these like groups of households and about this like area classification. And you talked about from the data, study results, like aging would increase household energy consumption for the single elderly person, like household. So I think that was kind of an interesting point because in Korea, like a single person household is also becoming a future issue. And many people will kind of is thinking it's coming, it's coming the real near future. And there'll be a large group of a single person household. But not many people are thinking they're going to become single and old at the same time. But how you like pointed out from this like data, it was really kind of interesting for me. So and I also agree, there's a big irony of like the energy consumption is actually kind of will decrease in the future with the social change. And that comes together with the people getting old and like not having children and the overall change in the society. And I think for this research, maybe it'll be also interesting to kind of apply this research perspective in Korea because Korea is facing the same issue with this energy and household and people in the single household, like getting old and becoming elderly, single household. So that is one thing maybe in the future we can try to approach. And maybe we can collect some data from Korea and Japan at the same time to kind of compare what will come in the future. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Two presenters are talking about three different issues and researches. Remaining two will be my response to it. So I'm going to talk about the second one, Dr. Masuda's paper. It was really fun that he didn't literally make it out, but the controlling rate in his study, the unemployment rate.
You just speak up, please.
Sure. The unemployment rate and the inflation, the two combined as a pain index. Do you know that? So sounds like it's no pain, no gain. So for how the fertility is during and after COVID-19 has changed it. And he also suggests what he called the fertility regime. It's like worker regime. Other countries and neighboring countries with a similar social development relation and our social, let's say, worker distribution might have combined as become the similar pattern of COVID and recovery. It was very interesting. Well, actually, I saw his presentation the last Japanese population social presentation. So I got very impressed. So I suggest him to participate in his paper in Korea. And so the last one, Dr. Manobu Tanahana. He's a good friend of mine. I know what he does. And for many audience is a statistician, so he's not really very popular in population or demographic society. But he's always trying to give good effort on his study. The only problem is his study is so hard, too hard to read and understand and make a comment. Only thing is I can say is the lifetime probability is never seen, never come, will never use the terminology. And now he explained why he has to use instead of the longevity. It's very simple. I didn't know that. Thanks so much for the, because I'm up. I don't know what to do, but we have, let's say, three more minutes. Is any audience want to talk about it? Hope not. All right, this is the end of this special session. Thanks so much for the excellent presenter, disgusting audience. Thanks so much.